My dog. The wiener dog.
Yeah, I'll check it.
He took it right out of this bag and ran with it. Yep. That's right.
Bean is, bean is this big and could run this whole village if he needed to. Or he'd at least try to run this.
He would.
Might not be able to do it, but he would try.
He talks back to me more than my kids talk back to me.
What kind of dog is that next to you?
Huh?
What kind of dog is that next to you?
Next to me.
Yeah, the one he always is barking at, the big one.
Oh, that's a, that's a, uh, that, uh...
It's an Italian Mastodon.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, King, King Corso.
Connie Corso.
Yeah.
Yeah. He wants to take on the Connie Corso, he's about a hundred and forty pounds. He's this big, you know? The Connie Corso, bride's neighbors had to talk about this video. The bean will try, he's got those...
He's got no fear.
Okay, fabulous.
Little color going on.
Right? I usually just give you, I only have black and white, I don't give any color.
A little color?
Yeah.
Wow.
I already put all this crap all out. Oh, gosh. All of that, yes. I didn't even look at it yet, they just...
Yeah.
They sent it yesterday.
The, uh...
One day this week we can get together.
I did talk to Matt.
Yes.
Oh, good.
We're gonna have to.
Yeah, I've got some notes here and I'm gonna have Jen, uh, I'm gonna have Nicole back me up. I talked to Matt this afternoon. So I got some notes from our conversation. There was this brief conversation of what, you know, we talked about.
About the UAF?
Yeah, so, uh, I'll ask you to interject at any time, because I don't want to misspeak. You know, he's talking and I'm trying to write. Okay, hold on, Matt, let's see. Go back to your first sentence.
Right? Let's restate this. One more time? Okay. Ah, I saw that, I love you, please. And that, I've already, uh, went through, although there's a ton of stuff in there to... It's terrible, isn't it? Yeah. And this is all together, different. Oh, I'm talking to myself, that's all. I'm the only one that listens, I'm the only one that cares, so. I feel like that, too.
How you doing, Dave?
Hmm. Thank you.
Hey, everybody?
Hey, John.
Boy. Everybody having a good Mother's Day? Take care of your mothers.
I was, I was, I was working. I do wish I had a mother to say happy Mother's, I mean, I have a mother, but she's deceased, but...
I know, it doesn't...
To spend one more day would have been wonderful.
It feels weird not...
Yeah.
Saying both you are, but this is a club we don't want to be in.
No, no.
This was my first one.
And I'm sorry, I, yes, I'm sure your feelings that day also, it's just, they don't...
Yours, too?
It's hard.
Yeah, why don't you close?
If it would have made you feel better, Fred, you could have brought me over some flowers and candy.
For him to bring you flowers, you're supposed to bring him flowers, make him feel better.
Let me, hold on one second, I get...
Fred?
I just used my hand to dry off the water.
I said if it would have made you feel better, you could have brought me over some flowers and candy.
I did.
Make him breakfast.
Bean was waiting right there in the driveway for him. I told him, take, take these to Brian.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
I used tea to sweat so much and then I don't want to put my papers. Right there. There we go. I'm the messy one.
Messy one, you okay?
Yeah, yeah. And Mary will confirm that. We got a minute yet. One minute. Hi, Ruth, hi, Kate. Alon, hi, Alon. Got everybody covered, right? You didn't bring any sunshine back from Florida?
No.
Why not?
It's been having sunshine, it's been beautiful.
It's just not warm. I mean, it wa, it was beautiful Sunday, you're right, Sunday was really a pretty day, but it was cool, but... But it's come. Okay. Fred, Diane, Jennifer?
Mm-hmm.
Nikki?
Yep.
Right, okay. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of the Village of Walton Hills of Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM. Okay, next order is pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Nikki, you want to do roll call, please?
Uh, Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Councilman Wheaton?
Here.
All council members present, along with our law director, John Montello, our fiscal officer, Nicole Sell, and Melissa Sangrick. Our fiscal clerk is here to join us tonight, too. Did I do the name right? Good, good. Okay. Any comments related to agenda items? And as we go through them, we do allow people to comment also. Otherwise, I'm gonna go through the legislation. Last week in our COW meeting, we talked about Resolution twenty twenty-four. That's our participation in the Coward County's nine-one-one plan. I know we went over it pretty good. I did forward and put in your mailbox more information on that. I, I hope that helped, just kinda, um, it was what we received from Mayor Holsmeyer Gale that kind of explains everything. Okay, so everybody's good with that? Any questions on that? Okay, I'd like to ask for executive, not, for, uh, suspension for that. I'll have it on the, we'll have it on the agenda for next meeting. Okay?
She seems to be the only candidate.
Yes.
So...
They... Mayor's talked about it in the mayors and managers meeting, and that's, she said she was interested in it, so... And then item B is the Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-four dash twenty, the appointment of Mayor Holsheimer Gale to Service Coward County's nine-one-one Program Review Council. You might recognize that name as the mayor, she is the mayor of Euclid, and that was her police department, her village, her community's police department that lost that young officer. Is everybody, I know we talked quite a bit about that, any questions on appointing her as the representative? Okay, and I would ask for suspension on that, if everybody's okay with that. Then we have, any questions from the, I, from the residents or anybody that's here? Or anybody that's walking and watching? Boy, am I messed up today. Like to welcome any residents or non-residents who are watching our live stream also. Any questions from any of our residents?
No.
That are watching the live stream? Okay. Then we have item C, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, NEORSD MCIP Grant Sanitary Sewer Study. I know we talked about that, I read in the record our village engineer, Joe Gelati's recommendation on that. And there is no cost to us. Is everybody okay with that on next week's?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Spitznagle.
I'm fine with this, uh, obviously, it's, and it has to be passed this year for next year, there's a deadline on it. Uh, the Phase Two, the Walton Hills Phase Two, could we at some point get a, a listing from Mr. Gelati of what streets they're planning on doing in that phase?
Yes.
Thank you.
Not a problem at all.
That may change, I understand that.
Right.
They were going to reevaluate this spring, everything.
All right. What streets they're gonna do with this phase that we have in front of us? And I can probably, he'll have that for even next week's council meeting. Any questions from any residents, non-residents concerning now? Okay, we have item D, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. That's confirming the appointment to our zoning board. We had three candidates, three residents. We had Mr. Alexander, Mr. Conkey, and Mr. Hamilton, Hamlin? Mr. Hamlin, Dave, Dave, Jeff, and Jim. We did, uh, conduct interviews. We had an executive session, we talked about that. And so today, um, I would ask to make the appointment of Mr. Conkey for the zoning board. And I would ask council, um, if they, uh, have any questions related to that and if they're okay with me putting it on, um, next week's council meeting. All three candidates, um, certainly would do a great job, and I, and I feel that way. But my appointment, uh, would be for Mr. Conkey.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Spitznagle.
Council President Protem, I would second that, uh, for Mr. Conkey. I would highly recommend the other gentleman that, uh, uh, applied. There will be other openings on this board and on other boards, please apply again, please. But, uh, yes, I would, I would confirm Mr. Conkey.
And I appreciate all three, uh, residents applying for the position, too. It's not easy. But I know, uh, Mr. Conkey would do a good job, the same would be said for the other two residents. So I would ask, I'll have that on, uh, next week's council meeting for suspension. Okay. Any questions related to that? Residents? Okay. Non-residents, any other residents that are watching the live stream?
No.
Okay. How many people did we have?
Six.
Six, okay. Did you want to...
We're done with this whenever you're ready.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move on to item six.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, are we, we're done with it?
Yeah, we're done with all the legislation at this time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Commander from the Bedford School System, uh, he is the sports director, I apologize if I get, the title's not exactly correct, uh, from the Bedford School, uh, system and, and he comes in every now and then to give us an update on, uh, their sports program and what's going on there. And, uh, we, he asked if he could speak tonight, and we said, sure, when, when you show up, we'll put you on the, uh, on the, uh, thing to speak. So at this time, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the rest of council if we may, uh, uh, insert, uh, Mr. Commander's presentation, uh, here in the agenda before item six.
Yes.
Second, okay?
Sure.
There you go, come on up. Welcome, sir.
Unless you want to stay for our finance meeting and stay to the end.
Sure, I learned a thing or two. Um, uh, may I pass these out?
Of course. If you have enough for residents, too, you're more than welcome to... Yeah, we can, you can take, me and John can share one.
Yeah, I think I have, I have one, actually.
Yeah, you might, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
All right, evening.
Good evening.
My apologies for being tardy, I was coming from a game, so I've learned that those pesky games tend to not end sometimes when you think they're supposed to, so...
No, you're on time, you're fine.
So, um, so again, um, uh, what I'd like to, my name is Jason Commander. For those of you that do not know me, I'm the new athletic director at Bedford High School. Uh, one of my goals coming in, uh, trying to reestablish, I think, uh, the presence of our school Bearcat basketball. Um, not necessarily the overall record that we wanted, but at the same time, uh, I, I think sometimes you have to take a, a good solid look at a team and, and understand, okay, are we gonna base their success on wins and losses only, or are we gonna base it on a lot of other things that went into it, from, I guess, where they started versus where they ended? So, uh, a record of five at eighteen, head, head coach, uh, Jeff Green, we took fifth in the league. Uh, one thing that I'm very proud of, we had three all-conference, uh, members of this team, uh, two of which that will be back next season. Uh, so Miss Sinah Flowers-Pain was third team, Kalen Shaw was second team, and India Woodson was first team. India Woodson, if you re- recall, she was also an all-conference member of our volleyball program. And actually, we just did signing day yesterday for her. She's headed to Baldwin Wallace, uh, to play volleyball. So very proud of India, and I want to say she carries like a three-point-eight GPA as well. So very impressive young lady. Um, we offer, uh, what we do is we name academic All-Americans in the program. Uh, those are kids who are on the team that carry a three-point-oh GPA or better. Uh, so they're, out of the twenty-three kids in the program, nine were academic All-Americans, meaning they carried a three-point-oh through the season. Which again, is not a, is not a, an easy feat to complete with all the demands of being a student athlete. Uh, the overall team GPA was two-point-eight. So very proud of this group. Uh, losing three seniors, but again, returning two all-conference performers. One of my big goals for Lady Bearcat Basketball is for them to spend the summer in the gym. Uh, we're gonna make sure that the gym is available, I'm already working on having hours of operation for the building so that the girls can get in there and work on their games, uh, and get better, essentially, so that we can be even better next season. Uh, moving on to, uh, boys' basketball. Forty kids in the program, uh, forgive my typo, please. Uh, three levels, JV, freshman, and varsity. Head coach Pete Friola, eleven and thirteen, uh, also took fifth in the conference. Three all-conference performers, uh, and two of which, again, like the ladies, are gonna be coming back. Uh, we had a first-team all-conference member in Javon J.J. Hudson. Not sure if you remember him from the fall, but he was also MVP of the Lake Erie League for Football and a first-team conference performer as well. Uh, and he's also currently on our baseball team, and you're probably gonna hear his name with all-conference for that as well. Uh, but we'll wait until those spring awards come out. Uh, Terrell Pollard, also a second-team member, and then Cam Bybee, a senior who is actually headed to Hocking College, uh, to continue his football career and, 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 and his collegiate studies. Uh, was a third-team all-conference member. Uh, two-point-five GPA for the team. Ten kids were postseason academic All-Americans. Again, we lose six seniors from the team, but again, we're returning two all-conference performers. Uh, this group won their first round, uh, sectional game against Cleveland JFK, uh, before eventually losing at Medina. Uh, so expecting big, big things from this group as they come back. Again, the same, the same situation is with our young ladies. We want to get the, we want to get our young men into the gym all summer and get them improving on their games individually. Moving on here. Uh, BHS Wrestling Team, very proud of this group, uh, head coach Adam Hoon, twelve kids in the program. Uh, dual meets record, not necessarily impressive, but, uh, I'll, I'll say this. We had two kids that made it to the Ohio State, uh, which is where they hold the OHSA State, uh, wrestling match. Um, one of those kids I want to speak on, Phillip Malone Senior, uh, very, very, very special young man. Um, not sure if everyone's aware, but, so, our, our academic eligibility standards for our athletes are they have to meet a certain GPA requirement and pass a certain amount of classes. And if they don't meet both requirements, sometimes they are on probation at the start of the year, where we still continue to allow them to compete. Other times, we have to sit them down until a set amount of time is gone by. So when wrestling season started versus when the first quarter ended, that left Phillip in a very awkward spot because he was ineligible to compete. But he stuck around, he hung out with the program, he continued to practice. Coaches made him a ten-study table with them. So he managed to, when he became eligible, make it to the state meet. So I think that says a lot about his commitment and the, our coaches' commitment, uh, to him. So very proud of that young man. Um, four postseason academic All-Americans, two-point-four team GPA. Again, Tristan Jackson was only a sophomore and made it to the state meet. So we're really, really anticipating big things from him coming back as well. Tristan also stars on our track team, which is preparing for the district meet. Uh, actually tomorrow, they head to Nordonia for that. Um, again, strength and conditioning is also a component or a goal of all of our programs that you're gonna see throughout this presentation, so really, again, one of the things I like to do is always evaluate how I'm doing and what am I offering our kids? And what are we managing to offer our kids that can help them be competitive across the board with everybody on our schedule? So that's a big thing for me, so really, really getting our kids into the weight room, getting them into, I guess, situations where they can become bigger, faster, and stronger. And again, I think that's gonna lead to more wins for us. Swimming and diving, uh, eleven student athletes in the program, head coach Tim Calley, uh, senior Joey Ferenc, sorry, junior Joey Ferenc, nearly missed the OHSA districts, uh, in diving, just a few points. Um, eight of those kids were postseason academic All-Americans, so basically, seventy-three percent of the team had a three-point-oh GPA or better. So I think that says a lot about our swim coach, Coach Calley, in terms of how committed he is to our kids academically. Um, team GPA of three-point-three, again, one of the better teams of the winter in terms of keeping their grades together. Losing four seniors from this program, but again, we are returning some kids that have a lot of talent. Danny Bridgeforth, who is our starting quarterback at one point, also a swimmer, also you'll see his name as a bowler, and then he's playing baseball. So Danny manages to stay busy throughout the entire year. So very impressed with him. Uh, Joey managed to take third at the Oroville Invite in the hundred-meter freestyle, so we're really, really looking forward to seeing him perform as a senior. And again, you see that strength and conditioning component, component that we want to make sure that we have for them uh, in their offseason so that they can come back into the water even stronger. Uh, the bowling team, probably the belle of the ball for the, for the winter. Uh, I gotta say that. Uh, nineteen kids in the program. Uh, the program grew extensively this year, so we went from just having a varsity girls and a varsity boys program to a JV boys team as well. So, head coach Krista Thomas of our girls program and head coach Steve Schuster of our boys program, they do an exceptional job. Uh, individual records are listed there. Um, girls did not necessarily well record-wise, but as you'll look, we did have some great individual performances. So for the league, Bedford High School managed to have the LEL Girls Bowler of the League, senior Latia Grimes. We had the LEL Boys Bowler of the Year, Tony Frankenberry. And then we also had the LEL Coach of the Year, Steve Schuster. So, uh, a very tremendous year for our bowling program. Uh, also very proud to say that the boys' bowling team, for the first time in school history, made it to districts as a team. So it was really cool to get to, it was really cool for me to kind of see bowling, because it's some of the sports I'm being exposed to for the first time. So to go to an OHSA match and see all the different schools and everyone's crowded around, and it's really, it's really exciting to see that stuff and see our kids perform in that environment. Team synopsis, uh, again, losing five very great seniors, but bringing back a lot of talent. Danny Bridgeforth, Steve James, uh, both varsity bowlers as underclassmen. And then Amina Foss and Inez Norman, again, also key contributors to our girls' program. So very, very impressed with them. Again, like anything else, we want to get them in the weight room. And again, one would think that, okay, it's bowling. Oh, yeah, it's bowling, kids need to get in the weight room and they need to get conditioned as well so that they can be successful. So again, you're gonna see that theme as I kind of go across all programs.
Mr. Commander, I'm gonna interrupt you. Um, Marvin, uh, one of our residents, didn't he do well in bowling, or...
Absolutely, so glad you brought that up. He just recently won the Junior Pro-Am, so he actually was featured on Fox Sports. Uh, and was presented his award by, forgive me, uh, one of the professional bowlers, one of the elite professional bowlers on the circuit. So Marvin did an exceptional job this season as well for us.
Yeah, Marvin's one of our young residents. Um, he's a, he's a junior, correct?
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah, absolutely.
You gotta mention our residents.
Absolutely.
We, 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 we got a little favoritism, you know?
We do, a little bit, a little bit, yes. All right, indoor track, uh, twenty-four kids in the program, head coach Eugene Sanders. Um, OATCC, Ohio Association of Track and Cross Country. Uh, at the state level, uh, very proud of Trinity Pollard. Uh, she just started triple jumping, ladies and gentlemen, she's a junior, and she took fourth in the state.
Wow.
So she is now in outdoor season, again, getting ready to go compete in districts tomorrow in Nordonia, so really hoping that she makes a lot of noise. Uh, our girls four-by-two and our boys four-by-two both placed ninth in the state in indoor. Uh, so they're getting ready to go compete as well. Uh, again, one of the top teams in the state, and then of course, we have Darren Morrow, who is our guy who took eighth in the state last year as a sophomore in the hurdles. So hopefully, we're gonna get him back to state. And from what I'm hearing, it's down to him, down to him and a young man, uh, named Tyrell Cloud from Brush, to see who's gonna kind of take the hurdles at state this year, so really pushing for Darren. Um, season, season accolades, thirteen kids on the team out of the twenty-four were postseason academic All-Americans. Team GPA of three-point. Also worth mentioning in that group of names underneath season athletic accolades, only one of them is a senior. So all of those kids that you see there will all be back next year to perform for us through both indoor and outdoors, so really looking forward to that group, uh, showing us some things this year. Um, moving on here, almost done. Uh, our cheer team, um, so I like to make sure that I always point out that our cheerleaders are every bit the athlete that any of our other sports are. That's important to me, that, uh, our young ladies are recognized, who not only cheer, but obviously would, they play other sports as well. But I think sometimes our cheerleaders kind of get lost, so I'm always trying to make a conscious effort to make sure that everyone knows that there's just as much training and commitment that goes into being a, a cheerleader slash performer during both football and basketball season and performance season overall, or competition season, as there is in any other sport. So Jasmine McAllister does a great job with this group, she's our head coach. Uh, Alana Brooks, uh, senior on the team, was given, was offered the opportunity and win as well to participate in the HBCU Combine, uh, in Atlanta, Georgia. So I'm hoping, I haven't heard from her yet, that she was recruited by an HBCU there a, again, and, and looking to cheer at the collegiate level. Uh, eleven postseason academic All-Americans, a team GPA of two-point-eight. Uh, very much looking forward to starting to try to, try to infuse cheerleading performances in a lot of our other sports, so getting them to perform at a soccer game, getting them to perform at a bowling match, you know, obviously in those windows where it doesn't have to be quiet. Just really trying to do some creative things with them, because again, this is kind of what Coach McAllister does. She wants to extend our cheerleading performances, getting them at wrestling matches, things of that nature. So really looking to that next year. Uh, I'll end with, uh, my synopsis of the season, so overall, you can see there, fall athletics, we had eighty-eight kids who were preseason academic All-Americans, and we finished with ninety-one being postseason. So believe it or not, the number of kids through fall athletics went up with three-point-os during the season. Again, speaks a lot to the work our fall coaches do in terms of grades. Again, speaks a lot to the work our fall coaches do in terms of grades. Again, part of being a leader is being real and constantly evaluating the process. So for me, looking at winter, we started the preseason with our winter athletes with a hundred and twenty of them being academic All-Americans, but we only finished with sixty-six. So what that says to me is we've got to take a hard look at study table and the things that we're doing. Maybe it's practice times, maybe it's a plethora of things, but we've got to take a hard look at what we're doing to make sure that we don't see a drop like that anymore. And again, that's where my job comes in. Spring athletics are kind of rounding out. Baseball just finished the regular season. Unfortunately, they fell to Overland Firelands last night, so their season is over. Softball season ended recently with a loss to, forgive me, it's, it's, I believe Norton. I believe it was Norton where they lost. Track and field, again, districts tomorrow and Friday. Girls' flag football had a tremendous season this year. They actually made it to postseason and got the chance to go play at the Cleveland Browns' practice facility for a tournament and then at First Energy Field for a tournament. So a very good year for those young ladies. And Coach Toth, our head varsity football coach, also coaches our girls' flag team. So the guy just never stops, honestly. Boys volleyball, boys volleyball has become a big thing. It's an OHSA sport. Our young men had a good season, a lot of learning going on. We became an OHSA sanctioned team this year, so we competed, they got about eighteen, nineteen games in. So, and the cool thing for me was a lot of members of our girls' volleyball team would show up to practices and help out and kind of help our young men understand the game and even kind of show up and coach them a little bit. So again, to me, that's kind of what school is about, kids enjoying the opportunity to help each other and be around each other and experiencing each other's success. So that concludes my report for winter athletics.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I do have a question for you. The boys volleyball, how many, like, high school teams in this area are there?
It's growing rapidly. So we, Cleveland Heights, Shaker, us, Brush not yet, but they're on their way. Very popular in the Akron area, like St. Vincent-St. Mary, Hoben, Firestone. If you kind of go out west, Brexville, very big in Brexville-Broadview Heights. Even as far as Midview, Tioga Falls. So it's, and again, that's just, I mean, there was a full-on tournament bracket that they're still, they're still actively playing. So Ignatius.
How many years?
So.
I'm just curious, I, maybe you guys know why it's kind of intriguing.
So, so we got into it last season, and again, forgive me because I wasn't here, we got into it late last season and we did not get a full slate of games in, but we weren't an OHSA sanctioned team. This year, we were. I feel like it's been like three or four years, maybe. Now, I'm sure it's been going on longer than that, club-wise, but the OHSA pretty much adopted it recently. And I'm guessing that girls' flag football is going to be next.
That was going to be my next question about that, just.
Yeah.
It's just wonderful.
Yeah.
Everybody should have that opportunity.
Absolutely.
To play any sport, so.
And actually, some, some colleges are starting to look at giving out scholarships for girls' flag football teams. So now our young ladies have opportunities to get scholarships to go play football at the next level.
I don't see pickleball on here yet.
Not yet.
But they say it's coming, they say it's going to be up.
I think it is.
It's going to take over tennis or similar, yeah.
Yep, agreed. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you as always, thank you. Oh, we did?
It still seems to be rolling, but we don't have any video.
You want to take a look real quick? Anybody watching? It looks like we might have lost our video, we'll take a look real quick. Let me go, I'm going to go look to see if.
But it appears to stop your recording.
Yeah.
The camera?
My computer shows it. Ray, were you on it with your phone?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't this time.
Okay, let's, cameras off.
Audio carrying through, but not the video.
Okay.
All right, so it's still recording.
It's still, yeah, what I'm going to do, for those of you who are listening, I'm going to, I'm not going to end the broadcast, I'm going to stop the stream and then I'll restart it to see if I can get the camera.
Because we do have audio, Mr. Spurzner, we do have audio.
Well, do you want me to mess around with it?
No, why don't we leave it? Because I think it'd be worse if.
And they won't be able to see me.
I think it would, at le, at least if you can see, you can still, I mean, here, you can participate.
Yeah.
They're not streaming in to see you.
That's right. That's right.
It's just a small mirror. You can't see them.
Yeah, and such a chance of something's going to just stop.
Yeah, and then if we're, okay, we got a lot. All right, we have item six, which is our finance update and discussion. I know that Nikki and Melissa put a whole packet together here, so everybody wants to get their packet together and we'll let.
Yep.
Nikki and Melissa go through it.
So first, I'd like to thank Melissa for all her help and all the other people that also helped. We've gotten to a good point. We're still, we still have a lot to do, but we've got pretty much everything in through April for the current year. And we are continuing to try and stay current into May and keeping things so that we can get regular reports out to you. So I guess I'll just go quickly, I gave the reports out last week for everybody to kind of take a look through and, and, you know, forward me any questions. The first page we have here would just include all of the cash balances as of April thirtieth and the outstanding debt.
You maybe just want to go through that cover, Nikki, or just kind of?
Sure.
Just go through it, because that way the residents can get a feel for it too.
Sure. So Star Ohio, our current balance is five hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Current interest rate on Star Ohio is five point four six percent. Our checking account balance was three million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Our tax account, which is generally not used anymore, it was used when we were actually doing tax returns for individuals, is a balance of five thousand, fifty and eight cents. And our mayor's court balance was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Currently, our OPWC loans.
Oh, you want to give our total?
Oh, the total was four million, four twenty-two, five hundred and eighty-one cents. The OPWC loan balances were five hundred and five thousand, twenty, and twenty-eight cents. We have our various Purpose Series 2023 notes at two million, twen, two million, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred. And we have two international truck payments. This is our first payment of a five-year, five-year lease in a total of eighty thousand, three oh seven for both trucks. And those are our debt service as of April. The next sheet I gave was the cash summary by fund, which showed all of the revenues and expenditures in and out of each fund. The grand total there of revenue over expenses for all funds was seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and two dollars and sixty-seven cents. I then gave a few additional reports. One was a revenue status showing our budget and what, how much revenue we have received year-to-date with each fund. So in the general fund, we have received approximately thirty-three percent of our revenue, which seems pretty consistent with the year. I don't know if you want me to go through each fund or just the general fund, I think is kind of a good.
Yeah, whatever council thinks and they ask questions, or anybody can ask questions.
And the next report was the appropriation status, which again, shows our year-to-date expenditures, our budget appropriations, and what percentage we have spent year-to-date. And following with that, we have, our year-to-date expenditures were at about fifty percent altogether, which included transfers out of the general fund, which makes it a little bit higher, on the higher end. And then the final report was a comparison of the past four years, for a year-to-date. So I don't know if there's any questions that you have, I know these reports are all new to look at. I think we just need to go through them for a day or two. Yeah. Before we have any questions. Personally, I, yeah, we just need some time to go through these because I know you just sent them yesterday, so. Oh, I actually sent them last Friday. Was it Friday? Yeah. Oh. Sorry. I guess I left them on my emails.
No, that's fine. I know, just kind of talking to everybody, a lot of input that council has given, Nikki, since she's been here, she's made the adjustments. So the reports, I know Ray mentioned, it's similar to Report Fifty-two, but it's different. And I know you felt, you kind of, you liked it, because a lot of it that Nikki did was the comments you put together on like simple, you know, making it a little simpler and Melissa and Nikki did that, eliminating some of the lines that we haven't been using for a while and just kind of put it in, in your format, which seems kind of easier.
These reports actually come right from the system, which eliminates any kind of mistakes as far as transferring numbers from the system to an Excel spreadsheet. So I think that's huge. So it's nice that we can print these out and, and, like I said, if there's any comments, I can, you know.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Diane.
Yeah, I really appreciate these, they're really broken down and very thorough on every topic, every department. My only other question that stood out right off the bat was the fire department, do, now this was only up till April thirtieth, do we pay six months in advance?
Which line I demand?
The one thousand, one-two-zero, six-four-zero. We don't pay quarterly, we pay six months, or how has that worked?
Oh, for the fire contract, yes.
Six months, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Nikki, for putting all this together and you also for putting all this together. It's really wonderful information for us. For the residents and people listening, that first page, we had total balances, cash balances of four point four million and total outstanding obligations of two point one million. To summarize that, I did speak with Nicole this afternoon, I did have a couple of questions that she answered about some of these columns. The, as you, you look at these papers, the appropriation status, these columns are reserved for encumbrances and encumbrance adjustments, final, those encumbrances are purchase orders that are outstanding still, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's what that column means, those are, are current purchase orders. And I don't remember what else I asked you about, one of those columns. But that was a big thing for me, what, what, I know what unencumbered and encumbered mean, but I didn't know how it equated these columns, and that's what it is, the open purchase orders. And for the, let's see, the cash summary, we basically have net inflows currently for the residents who can't see these, over, over expenses of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and two dollars. That's current, correct? I do like the cash flow also, cash flow report, because we can kind of see from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, what, what those numbers are and what, how the trend is, and I really like that in each one of these funds. So basically, as the mayor and I talked this afternoon briefly, basically what this boils down to is we're holding our own. You know, we're not, we're not losing large amounts of money, we're not gaining large amounts of money, but we're, we're basically staying status quo right now. And we're, we've got a lot of capital going on, so that's good news.
Mayor Collett Grant?
Yeah.
Just, just wanted to comment, I did share with Nicole a little earlier how much I appreciate these reports. And, you know, using the uniform accounting network is only, is, is, is a great tool and it's only as good as the information in. You put in good information, it's, it will print out for you the details that council needs to be able to, to see what's going on. So I certainly just want to express my appreciation for these reports, all of them, they're, they're very good and, very good reports.
Thank you.
And then I did just have one question, are there, so these three or four, are there any other, any other reports that your offices might be working on?
Are there any other that you would request?
Don't ask that.
I mean, there's, there's other reports we can print out. We're looking at a lot of paper and a lot, looking at numbers a lot of different ways, so if there's something specific, feel free to email me, call me, let me know if there's something specific you're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
So it's going to obviously take us a little bit of time to go through these, as Ms. Allen said, and digest these. But reviewing these this afternoon, this afternoon, like I said, they're phenomenal reports, like Mr. Whedon said, and they're, they're, they're going to help us tremendously moving forward. I did send.
I'll, I'll want to interrupt you just for a second. So I'm sure everybody's okay, but if we can put it, you know, have a, I can put it on the agenda for the council meeting, you know, just kind of at the beginning, because we don't have a real lot for the council meeting next Tuesday. We can put at the beginning of the council meeting, you know, a finance update, so we can have discussion again, you know, if, if you want.
Sure.
You know, once it gives everybody a little time to go over and stuff. And like Nikki said, if anybody has any questions in between that time, feel free to, you know, hold Nikki or Melissa or, you know, email or call and.
Right, and, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but I would, we would both appreciate if we would have some questions in advance, because we don't have all of our papers in front of us, so we can have time to look into your questions and have a appropriate answer.
The only thing that I would ask Nikki is if you could break down our utilities per facility.
And Melissa's already been working on that.
I know, you said that you guys were starting to, so I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, so I think, I believe we're up to date through April with all the breakdowns, correct?
Through May.
Okay.
Well, that, May is involved in.
I might have you take the mic, Melissa, that's why I put this. Well, we have our residents do that, so I got to be, yeah, you could take it and put it in front of you if that.
Here.
I'll move the whole thing out.
Oh yeah, that's a way to do it, too. We, I watched.
Absolutely.
You do it a number of times, Ray.
Thank you.
That, it's just, it's better for the recording, too.
Okay. Yeah, most, we do have, like, all the data in, we enter it in as it clears the bank, but as we get the, you know, we'll get a statement that says it'll clear, you know, on the nineteenth and.
Right.
We're at that point now that we're getting things in, you know. Yeah, I had asked. That's the day's. I asked Nicole more about that, and you guys are doing an absolute phenomenal job. Thank you so much for your diligence and all the hard work, honestly, that you guys have done. I know it's been a lot, and I appreciate, I appreciate it, and I'm sure our residents do, too.
Well, thank you. We are trying just to be open and, and transparent and, and get everything to you that you need so you can make the right decisions.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Nikki.
And Melissa.
Thank you.
And the staff, I know we had two staff meetings yesterday and we're putting some things in place that.
Yes.
Are required to do and. Are required to do and maybe a little more difficult for the directors and, and managers of the department, but they're all willing, knowing some of it is required, so. More paperwork, but we'll get through it. More work for, of course, Melissa and Nikki too. So, but, but that's okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
Nicole, you, you had said that in May, the state was going to start their audit again for '22 and '23. Did they start already or?
I did contact them because they had not contacted me and they're a little bit behind. They're waiting for a bank reconciliation to be complete.
Okay.
For last year and the year before, so.
And Brian, maybe you want to talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
And just, let me, I'll just fill in. So, as you know, we also use Matt Stowinski, who you guys have met, who helps us out with anything Nikki or Melissa needs, maybe that is outside their realm or with their realm and just wants some support. We also use him a lot in our economic development part of, of the village. He's involved with a lot of the draft. Economic development, a lot of the draft, how can I say it, transactions from the TIF to the CRA to some of the tax sharing we're looking to do with the Bedford School System. So, I know Brian, I know Nikki, we, we talked about some of the different things with getting everything in line with the audit and I know Brian was going to talk to Matt Stowinski, but I just kind of wanted to tie it together, what we use Matt for too, his expertise. I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
No, no, not at all, thank you. Yes, as you all know, I sent Nicole a memo a few weeks ago as we had discussions on the open floor here as far as two items that kind of go into one about our past audits or the, actually the recent audit. And there were some items, a list of items that, that they had referenced that they want us to either do a different way or they were found in non-compliance for whatever reason and they needed to be addressed. So, I sent this memo to Nicole that we would talk about this and see where we are. I know Nicole and the staff has been working on these items. So, I wanted basically an update on where we are in coming into compliance with all of those items and where we are going moving forward and projected dates as, as well as can be projected of, of working on the other items and coming into compliance with, with all of our state auditors' concerns. The second part of the agenda was talking about, as the mayor said, Mr. Stazinski came in with another lady, with Lady Jennifer Pay. And they worked to get to the bottom of the reconciling items that weren't reconciled from previous years. So, there was a question from council as to what exactly did they do and what the recommendation is moving forward. Mr. Stazinski couldn't make it this evening. I did speak to him on the phone and I have some notes, which I'll address in a little bit. But I think first we can deal with the first part of the, the equation there as far as the items that were found in non-compliance and where, where we are at this point.
Did you want me to go through each one or?
Whatever, however you want to deal with it, what you've, what you've dealt with, I know some of these items are already completed.
Right.
Yeah, just give a quick summary.
Yeah, just a.
So, many of the items had to do with just entering things into the system properly, making sure purchase orders were done, a lot of making sure that your expenses don't exceed your appropriations. Those are all budget items and if you, when you review all of these reports, you'll see that we are in compliance with all of those. When we are getting, and those reports will help us to know that, okay, we need more money for, for example, police salaries because we're getting close to, you know, close to the end of our budget, we need to increase that budget. The other piece to that is when we do have to amend our budget, it has to go through council. And then after council, it goes down to the county for approval and then we are allowed to go ahead and amend our budget. So, we just, it's basically procedural, those items, which was number on your list, three through five. A couple of the other items that were smaller, just in allocating interest to other funds other than the general fund, again, a procedural, easy fix, and we've already taken care of it. I think the big one that we're kind of working with, how the department heads now, is working on getting purchase orders before you actually make the purchase. So, we're working with all the departments. Everyone's willing to work with us. It's a little bit, you know, we're going to have some growing pains. But we'll be okay. We'll get there. Couple of the other items, the taxable, the uniform allowance. In prior years, we were pulling a purchase order for the amount of the uniform for each police officer. They did not like the way we were doing that. They want it to run through payroll. So, that is something we'll be changing as far as the uniform allowance is concerned. Timely depositing was another item. We are within a day now, within 24 hours, sometimes within minutes. We've got a check reader now, so if we receive checks, those go right in, right in that day or the following morning. If we have any cash, we check the safe every day. We put the cash in. All is going in within 24 hours. I think the only thing that we're still working with is the recreation department and their deposits. We still have to kind of finagle something with that because a lot of times they'll hold their deposits in case somebody, you know, decides they can't make it and, and the auditor really just doesn't want you holding deposits for more than 24 hours. So, we're still working on that a little bit and the best way to approach that. Other smaller things, making sure your financial reports were in on time, which we did. Making sure that all the employees are aware of the auditor of state fraud reporting. They now have a form that they have to sign. Some things we haven't done is we need to designate a public records custodian. So, that's something we still have to do coming up in the future. I'm not sure on the cybersecurity policy and training. I, I didn't look into that one yet, if we have a cybersecurity policy or not. So, I still have to do that. There were some payroll controls they noted. Making sure that the mayor approves vacation, all of those hours which he's doing. Leave balances are approved, regular working hours are approved. We're taking care of all that now. But there's still some policies that we need to update. They want a formal remote working policy. They want, we need to update our credit card policy, which John and I are working on. So, we're getting there. We still have some work ahead of us, but we're getting there.
But as Josh, our auditor's recommendation, just keep, you know.
Keep plugging along.
Keep doing, a lot of those are ones we've had on reports for 18 years.
Yes.
You know, that just, because they're recommendations. Some are now, we know our Ohio Revised Code, like the purchase reps and some of the other ones that we talked about with the employees, but, so we're getting there.
Could you, Nicole, could you, as we move along in the process, as you complete these items or these policies get implemented, could you give us updates as to their status?
Sure.
So, we're aware. Thank you.
I know we have a remote, Lori put one together as a draft, but I've got to talk John on if we need to approve it through council or it just gets added to the handbook.
Okay.
That we'll have to find out. But I know we do have a draft for that.
And the second part of the memo was talking about the unreconciled items in, in our books. I did talk to Mr. Stazinski and I have my notes and I've already briefed Nicole to jump in because I don't want to misspeak, okay? This is from a phone conversation and my notes and, you know, as he's talking, I'm trying to write and, and, and I said, okay, I think I got it. So, where this all started was basically there were unreconciled items at the end of '22 totaling roughly around $200,000. Now, Mr. Stazinski, I'll just say Matt for.
We call him Matt Stu if that helps.
Matt Stu, thank you. Matt said that that amount was not dissimilar to, and he couldn't remember whether it was 2020 or 2021, but that amount, roughly that same amount, had been there. And he said sometimes this, like they worked, I believe you found there was around $70,000 that wasn't reconciled, but then you found it in the, it didn't end up on one report because it was the end of the year salary or payroll.
Right, right.
And, and it was on the other report, so you had to find it.
Certain payroll items, it's a timing issue.
Yeah, so it was something simple like that, but they just had to find it. They did, now, now the auditors who are doing our '22 and '23 audit are different than the auditors. They're different people than the auditors that did our previous reports. So, they did connect with the previous auditors who did forward us their working documents so the finance people could use those. And Nicole has been, and, and the department has been following up on all these items that need to be reconciled and that's what Ms. Pay and I believe you too were working on, right, Jennifer? Or was it just?
Jennifer did more of the reconciling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's Melissa.
So, he said, the good news, and, and this still has to be worked through, is and, and this has happened to me and I'm sure it's happened to everybody else in, in their own accounting. You get your bank statement and you have on your books a number and the bank statement comes in at a different number and you're like, okay, where, where's that money? Well, the bank says we have more money than what our books say.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm correct in that. So, that's, if you want to take that as good news, it's not like the bank says we have several hundred thousand dollars less than what our books are showing. It's, it's the reverse. He says the problem is it's, there's no breadcrumbs, is the term that he used, to try to find where that, where that money is. So, they have to keep digging and digging to try to find what happened with, with that. He said it could be something as simple as one item that just didn't get logged.
Correct.
For some reason. Or it could be some multiple. So, that's what, what you are looking for, right?
Correct.
I haven't misspoken yet?
No.
Matt has looked for a resource to work with Nicole and the state does have a group that will come in. For various reasons, he does not think that, that route is necessary. They will charge around $50,000 to do that.
I think it was 15.
No, he said 50.
He did?
Yeah.
We.
And I said 50?
I'll double check on that because I think.
Yeah, well, maybe it was a cell phone call.
Yeah.
But whatever the charge was, he, he thought.
Yeah, because it's not, yeah.
Yeah, he thought, because I had heard 15 also.
Right.
But I said 50 and, and he said, yeah, because I was reading back my notes. So, that I, it could be the translation in the cell phone conversation. But whatever, whatever that cost is, Matt didn't think that it was needed for, for various reasons. Now, he did find within the UAN system, a group, they have a group that works with, that are hired by UAN that actually work in the system, a support group. And there is a person there that you can hire to come in from UAN to work with Nicole to find that, that money. And Matt would like to recommend us to go out and get a proposal from that UAN group to come in and do that. And I would agree with that, with doing that. So, that was basically the end of our conversation. He's, he, the way he put it was, it's a, it's a puzzle that needs to be put together. It's not really unusual, if, if I could say that, for sometimes the one, one doesn't agree with the other one, but obviously you have to find out and, and make it right so you can move forward. So, the goal here is to reconcile, obviously, as much as possible and then move forward, correct?
Correct.
And hopefully we can reconcile all of it with this person that we can bring in.
Right, and that was a lot of our duties for the past nine months is going back into the accounts and taking it one item at a time off the bank rec. Is it in UAN? Is it on the bank rec? And just making sure that we had everything accounted for.
Yes.
So, that's been a lot of our work.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, this stuff does go back longer than three years?
It does.
Okay.
I know me and Nikki had, we've had multiple conversations with Matt. And Ray, you kind of mentioned it, why he, when he mentioned it does, why he thought the UAN might work the best because they have all our records. So, they have everything, it's not like, you know, we bring in someone else and Nikki has to take and transfer everything to them or look for everything where they're, they got such a great start. And this is just, and I don't know if you had that conversation, but just, I know me and you did and I did it. When he found that out, that they have that group, it's like, wow, they have our information and of course, they know how to research their database better than anybody because it's theirs. So, that's why he, he thought it might be more effective. But I know, so that's, I mean, that's what we got out of it. I know you had probably a little more in-depth conversation with him, which is good.
So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, and I would, again, I would, I would recommend to go with Mr. Stu's recommendation and get a proposal from these people as soon as possible so they can come in and help Nicole shore this up so we can move forward.
Let's see what Matt says. I, I know he was going to go from there. Because we know we're going to, I mean, it's up to you, but we know we're going to have to go some rock.
Sure.
I mean, I, I think we've all talked about that, whether it was using, what's the group called that the state uses? That we talked about.
Local Government Services.
Local, Local Government Services, that was our other option. But he's thinking the UAN might be better and less costly. But he's thinking the UAN might be better and less costly, so, because we're paying for their program right now. You know, so. Nikki, I appreciate it, too, I think you and Melissa put a great report together, the cover sheet and just each individual report. So what I'll do is, I will put a line item in the beginning of the council meeting to review, so that gives everybody another week to look at this stuff, and, and then we'll keep having it. I mean, we can, you know, whether you have a separate finance meeting, or you want it inside the COW. The reason we had it inside the COW meeting, I know Council Pro Tem Brian Spitznagel called and asked if there was a lot on the agenda. You guys, you know, see, there wasn't a real lot.
Well, and Mayor, I already apologized to Mr. Whedon and Ms. Canzoni, I'll apologize to the rest of the folks here. I did have that conversation, I did tell the mayor, when was it, Thursday or Friday, that I was gonna text everybody that we'll have it in the COW, and Jennifer made me forget to do that.
Of course, because I was the only one you didn't call.
So I apologize to everybody for that miscommunication, or non-communication, it wasn't a miscommunication, it was on my part, and I bear that.
Well, I'm sure everybody's okay, Brian, nobody, everybody here does a good job.
I'll pitch in the parking lot.
There you go.
Yeah, I'll go to my car, my car will be painted.
I know where they're pointed.
Any questions from anybody relating to the finance report, the finance update? Anything else we talked about this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
I would just like to say honestly to Nikki and Melissa, you guys have done a phenomenal job. I know it's taken a while, but we, I'm sure everyone on council here appreciates all the stuff that you guys have done, and trying to get everything straightened out, and moving forward, and the reports are great, and just, thank you.
You're welcome, we still have some work to do, though we're not done yet.
But you're getting there.
We're getting there.
I agree with Jennifer. Anything else? I got one item here, is just the kinda recap, so everything, we'll have suspension for Resolution 2024-19, suspension for 2024-20, suspension for 2024-21, suspension for 2024-22. I'll talk to Joe Gilati and find out what streets will be done with this phase of the sanitary sewer study. So I think that's the only other thing we had on there that I needed to circle around back with.
Yep.
Okay. And then we'll have those items for the council meeting, and the beginning of it, we'll just have a finance update or whatever, in case there's any, any questions or anything to... I have nothing for any other business, if anybody else has anything for item seven? Any questions from the residents? Any questions from residents that are watching the live stream? I know you can't see us, but hopefully you've heard us through the whole meeting. Okay, can I ask for a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, second by Councilman Whedon. Vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagel?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 8:09 PM. Thank you, everybody.
See that computer? Check out their laptop.
Yeah, I wonder what happened?
I thought somebody moved up.
I seen Diana walk by earlier. Jennifer told me to say it.